...park, library, school board, or village received. They all have a schedule where people got to show up and throw in for the need for the record. They are hurting you guys and hurting and hurting everybody else on this board. They're hurting the record. You're the ones that should get it in front of them, but you're not because people not coming to pay bills. We have paid bills for over three months off. We've had three months and no bills be paid. We called several different meetings. We should have approved the shooting. A long time ago, the carriers all put on the agenda for us and the board to approve the shooting. And guess what? No one showed up to leave by himself and trust me, your neighbor, Heather, and also the car. That is it. You have to do the same. You have not attended any of their meetings. And y'all know that for a fact that y'all come to leave when y'all already, y'all see that we are there today and never leave. So just going to pump that out for you guys. This meeting started? Okay. I would like to talk about the special meeting on today, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. And the time is? One oh seven PM. Please call her. Trusty Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trusty Gray Everett? Trusty Carolina?
Yes.
Supervisor Henry? Next, um, let's leave your right hand.
Indivisible, good, liberty, and justice for all. I didn't know I was laughing. I'm sorry, people.
Father, we do thank you and we praise you for just an opportunity to call your name. One more time. Now, God, we know on behalf of his township, of these leaders, Father, we ask so God that you will allow the peace, the passage, all understanding to guard our hearts and our minds. You know what has to be done, Father, and hope us to do it. And whatever entity has plans for our evil, we turn around.
Yes.
And we will turn toward our good and we stand in advance for peace. Peace, peace, peace. Be still in Jesus. All right. Is there a motion to approve the special meeting on October thirty eighth, twenty twenty four?
Sorry about that, people.
All right. The motion is second. Any discussion? Trusty Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trusty Gray Everett? Trusty Carolina?
Yes.
Supervisor Henry? Next, is there a motion to approve the general fund? I would like to make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I would like to make a superseding motion to pay all the bills. I do not come to board meetings to play games, to perform. If you did work for us, if you need anything for township, we are here today to pay all the bills. Not one person should not be paying because you have not paid one bill for three months. So pay every vendor that's on the list. You should not be removing anybody from this list. No. So that is my motion. Is there a second? There's been motion, second, to pay all the bills. Call her. Trusty Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trusty Gray Everett? Trusty Carolina? Supervisor Henry?
Yes. If I can tell, the motion paid on that means no bills be paid. Um, my advice is for the board is to pay bills. Other than that, all the vendors, all people, we already messed up our credibility with vendors. Vendors don't want to do the work because they say we do not pay them. And as you can see, we do not pay them because people get here and pay the taxes with their money. They did the work, paid the people for the work they done. So we should not be here saying remove anybody. So the special meeting restricted for, hold on, my order, my order. Please, we are here to have business.
So please, is there a motion on the board to pay the bills? You don't want to pay any bills?
Uh, I would like to make an amended motion. So we do want to pay bills, but I have an amended motion.
Okay. Well, I'm not in favor of amended motion. You can make the motion. Please help people if you want to sit down and love you. Go ahead.
Uh, there's amended motion to take out I am one ninety-nine, which is Excel printing, um, two hundred, which is Excel printing. Um, I have questions about the toys. Um, not saying that I don't want to pay anything for the toys, but I have questions about that. So that's two oh two one two sixteen. Um, gonna take out two twenty-three, which is Southland RCM Communications, uh, two twenty-four, which is Southland RCM Communication. And that's good. Okay. And so, um, just to be, uh, clear, so we have a new amendment that says that no elected or official can use the township to promote their person, their slogan, their name, their image, or anything. And if they do, then they have to pay for those things. And so, again, we're just trying to make sure that the rules that are put in place are followed. That's it. We're not trying to say that anybody can't be paid, but you have to follow the rules if you want to be paid. So technically, the board township doesn't owe these people any image that has the supervisor's base name. She has to pay back according to the amendment. Just one rule to be followed. That's it.
Are you done?
No, actually, about the toys. Have the toys been purchased?
Are we done?
I'm asking a question.
You should know the answer. At the end of the day, can y'all make sure y'all have security here? We're not going to do this today. We're here to vote and move on. People may think they stay in and move on. At the end of the day, you should know what's paid for and what's not.
Well, I'm asking a question. Do you have the toys? Are the toys in, like, the township? Or do they still need to be delivered? That's a question to ask.
You finished? Are you finished?
No, I don't know. I asked a question. Have the toys been purchased?
Would you better respond, sir?
Okay, well, respond, okay.
I am responding. At the end of the day, before y'all be here, you should know what's paid for and what's not.
It's a yes or no question.
Trusty, why haven't y'all bought toys?
So either they're paid for already, or once again, it's days before Christmas and we're already talking, we're still talking about toys.
The toys should have been paid for because you guys should have come to me for three months ago. So y'all get up here and grandstand about toys? Really? Y'all hurting the people, the kids. We buy toys every single year for a township, every year. There's no reason why y'all should not have toys. Why are we arguing over toys?
Don't argue over toys. We asked a question. If the toys have been purchased or not.
I know. You guys should pay for the toys.
Even if, even without the toys being purchased, the bigger thing is the insurance. We don't have insurance. So let me be very clear. After this meeting, we still won't have certain types of insurances. So what if somebody's child, God forbid, swallows a law or gets hurt by a toy? The township doesn't have coverage to even take care of that. We will not, we will not have insurance after this meeting. No liability, no auto insurance. And there are I think three or four other insurances that we not have. So again, we're talking about toys, but we need insurance. And then there are no insurance companies that are even willing to give us a quote.
Stop doing that insurance. All right. First, before, let me say this. She sounds dumb.
That's the issue. Can I answer a question? We should consult.
You guys did not come to a board meeting and put the township in jeopardy. We don't have insurance because you two did not come and take care of your business. Trusty Gonzalez and Trusty Carlin, you did not come and vote like you should. So stop having us do this. Y'all have nothing to do with toys.
So they lived with fault. They were able to obtain insurance without you on it. So what's the other one? The problem? I think you're the problem. So is that the case here in the township? Can we not get insurance because you can't be out it? Yes or no? That's a yes or no, no? Today, why is insurance on this? Why is insurance on here? Is it because you can't be out it? Is that because you can't be out it?
Which is both to pay for the insurance. That's it. Now we try to spin it all y'all over. We got proof of everything. We got email change with us. Uh, the broker, the company begging you guys to come to a special board meeting. We got their battle log. I want to tell y'all come to a special board meeting. We got everybody asking y'all to come and move your job. You guys refuse to come to a board meeting and vote to have insurance. Therefore, we don't have insurance because you didn't vote for it. That is the truth. And KP's best now is literature for you right now. He's backed emails. Stuff to show you that they, like, they're going to pay for insurance. So we don't have insurance because of two individuals down there at the county. You should be asking them, why did they take seven days, seven weeks, they missed? They get seven weeks to take care of the business. We had seven hours to make it right. And then you guys want to go. I'm only here because I want to pass the insurance, which is the other insurance, or even the cyber insurance, and manage. But today, guys, we do not have insurance. We do not have insurance after this meeting. And the reason why we don't because they did not come take care of their business. Uh, security, uh, just like your police, remove anybody that's disrupting the community. Items I'm saying no, I think you guys should move forward to pay everybody their money that they're owed. So, was it? So, so now, we should go pay everybody. So we might as well pay, so the motion is to remove our vendors out.
Second.
Trusty Carolina?
Yes.
Trusty Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trusty Gray Everett? Trusty? Supervisor Henry?
No.
All right, moving on. So that means no bills be paid because they want to remove people. No matter how they see, then they owe money. So we should pay everybody and have them pay for over three months. We get here and they grandstand. We play politics with people. I don't like the fact that we don't have. Y'all, please stop. To that, we need to move forward. Is there a motion to pay the general system fund? Is there a motion or not?
Motion to approve the general assistance.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second, Matt? Y'all said general system fund. Okay, second. There's been motion, second, to pay the G A.
Uh, I have a question. Um, attorney, this question is, uh, towards you. Um, I have a question about, um, the items that are under citation boxes. Um, I know that's general assistance. Um, and I just wanted to understand, does that still apply with the image ordinance? Um, or do they not have to comply with the image ordinance and general assistance?
I'm sorry, I have to. Okay, sorry. Just a second. Uh, I have to hold a copy of the ordinance to see what was accepted out. I honestly don't remember offhand right now. So do you have a copy of the ordinance handy? Otherwise, I can.
I mean, I can pull it up on my home. All right. So we not going to stay here. Y'all can deal with that later. Well, then I make amended motion to take it out. If you don't want to like just take it. Whatever you want to have. Y'all know, just like the attorney knows to my left, that G A department is the only department that sold the supervisor. But you guys keep on neglecting the people. Just so y'all know what they're doing up here, because they ain't comprehending. They are not paying for your food. So when you come to our food pantry and you say you want a blue box of bread and some chicken, guess what? They ain't paying nobody. We have no food in our food pantry. That's the honest truth. So y'all can keep on sitting here and say, yeah, they don't pay people. No. You're hurting the people. Y'all the ones who need the food. They sit here worried about, just think about, we're talking about amateurs or being literature or, or, or a, uh, piece of cake that go out. That's irrelevant to the fact that they not eating y'all. Thousands of people are being neglected because of their competition stuff. This makes no sense. So, okay.
So I would say that we're, we're not saying that we. Hold on, let me speak. I have, like, hold on, let me speak.
You're not paying.
Hold, let me speak.
But you're not paying.
Can you? Can you talk to your guys again? So Bob says, the boxes are with her image or her name. Again, if you're trying to just feed the people, feed the people. The people don't care about what's on the box. If you're concerned about, if you're concerned about paying for the, if you're concerned about feeding the people, feed the people. Why does your men gotta be on something for people to get this? It's not for township to buy.
So you worry about my name on a box with Fred's super ready name.
Follow the rules.
For thirty years.
I can follow the rules.
The same image that been on the box for thirty years, the same image on their neck. But because of your jealousy, your hatred of me, you don't want my name on a box. Stop. And people still don't get the box. They still don't eat. They still don't know that this supervisor gave them the box. Stop being hateful. Y'all don't see that people are leading with their emotions up here? It ain't about y'all. It's about a box and a name. We how we got to that point. We supposed to feed the people, vote to feed the people. That's what the motion is. Move forward. All right. It's a motion, second, on the floor, to pay general assistant fund. Call her. We ain't going to win. She can, she can still respond to that. You can say, yes, hello, we're. What do you want to do? What do you want to do? What do you want to do, trust me? Okay, go to the next. Go to the next. Trusty Gray Everett? Trusty Carolina? Supervisor Henry?
Yes.
Motion failed.
All right, again, no more bills paid.
Next, is there a motion for, uh, road and bridge fund? Is there a motion? Is there a second? Second. If you're special, call her. Trusty Gray Everett? Trusty Gonzalez? Trusty Carolina? Supervisor Henry?
Yes.
Motion failed. All right, moving on. Next, we have resolution proclamation and ordinance. Uh, is there a motion to group, to do a consent agenda for this department from one through? Well, first, is there a motion to do a consent agenda? Is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there a motion, second, call her. Trusty Carolina?
Yes.
Trusty Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trusty Henry? Trusty Gray Everett? Supervisor Henry?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to group number one, number two, and number four in the consent agenda? Is there a motion? Is there a second? Second. All right, call her.
I have a question. Are we going to vote on the other ones as well?
We gonna do number three. We are removing that one because we have to do something different. So we doing one, two, and four.
What is number three?
Oh, we, we gonna get to that, sir. We on the one that you guys just agreed to group. So we're grouping one, two, and four. Right, call her. Trusty Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trusty Carolina? Trusty Gray? Supervisor Henry? All right, um, so for number three, it is approved? Motion passed. Okay, so for number three, it was the general fund and general assistant fund tax levy. Um, the reason why I pulled this one from the agenda is because we have first to pass the budget. You cannot levy the people's tax money without telling them how you're going to spend their money. So that's the reason why I removed number three from the agenda.
Wait, wait a second. I thought we were voting on the insurance products.
This is, that's a tax levy. Just read it. Just ask. Thirty, you see? Just bring that to that. Just approved one, two, and four. That's what we just approved.
Wait, so we, we just approved under section seven or eight?
Okay. I just read. It's a resolution proclamation and ordinance. Then we went through, do we would like, would we like to have a consent agenda? Everyone said yes. So then after that, we group one, two, and four. And everyone agreed on one, two, and four. Now the last one is number three, which is the tax levy.
So number, so I make a motion that, make a motion that we approve, uh, number three.
That's the, that I just told you are removed from the agenda.
So why, why are the other ones different?
Because this is for our general fund and general assistant fund. The other ones got nothing to do with it.
You can't pass a tax levy before you pass a budget. I mean, you shouldn't, but you could. You can still do it.
No.
We have to pass this before. Attorney, yeah, don't you answer that question, attorney? Can we pass this tax levy without?
Remove the budget, so.
Attorney, already got a pass with their toll. We cannot. I've been, you have another pass with this ball and a pass with that.
Fortunately, we can approve of that because we don't believe.
I'm not going to vote on this, so it don't matter. I'm telling you.
Well, I made a motion.
You can make the motion all you want. You have to come back for another board meeting if you have to have a budget in place.
It's motion and second, I'm for.
Okay, so listen, so listen, I'll explain this to y'all. How do they levy their taxes and they didn't?
Attorney, can you advise on this?
At all. Where's the budget? So why you levying taxes? And y'all don't even know how to spend the money, attorney, because you please that lie. You cannot, you cannot levy tax money and you don't have a budget to tell the public how you going to spend their taxes. And y'all, y'all not understanding it. For those that don't get it, that's true. But those that understand what I'm saying, who knows? Tax money without a budget. So they don't levy money. Like, let's say, they raise property, it's property, and they levy the tax. And I go, boy, now I'm concerned. How am I letting them spend the money? What's the plan to spend the money? They even gave you a plan. They just raised taxes, though. That's the thing I'm here doing. You're not listening. They're telling you what's happening. But everybody just, just pass it, just pass it. So no, you're not.
On this attorney, I think you want more information?
So I have not had an opportunity to research this exact question. But some very quick research, uh, right now as we're sitting here tells me that, yes, it is generally advisable to approve a budget before you approve a levy. But, 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 but my concern, though, is that you have a timeframe in which to approve the levy. If you don't approve the levy, it's filed by the first, the last Tuesday in December, then you can't levy taxes next year. So it would be my advice to pass the levy.
Correct. So if we pass the levy and what the, uh, and you're just trying to say, it's true that it wouldn't matter. However, if we pass it, then we're in good shape.
I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say necessarily that you're in good shape because you still do need.
Oh, correct. But I mean, it would be bad.
However, there is, there is a specific timeframe in which the levy does need to be approved by. Granted, there also is a specific timeframe in which the budget needed to be approved by. That obviously hasn't happened yet. So this is a very unorthodox thing. There actually is, there wasn't per se in the law that addresses this that I have found. Uh, I do see a statement from T O I, which is the towns officials of Illinois, and it does say that if the fiscal year begins after the levy must be adopted, then the budget appropriation ordinance must be adopted before the levy. So as a general rule, yes, the budget appropriation ordinance should be adopted before the levy. However, my concern is that if you don't adopt it now, even if that, that, that condition prerequisite is required, that you may, that the township may be putting itself into another bad position. So my suggestion would be, of course, to pass the budget and the levy. But if we can't get both of them, at least pass the levy so that, and the levy can potentially be amended later. And, and budget also can be amended later. But I would, I just have a concern about not, not taking budget.
So what's the deadline, uh, attorney? It's the thirty-first to pass the tax levy, right?
It is the last Tuesday in December, which this year is the thirty-first.
So you got the thirty-first to pass, to be clear, but that is the date that it needs to be filed. I, I understand. So they have time to have a special meeting, and then they can also have the budget, which I had the budget on the prior agenda on Tuesday. To pass. But you guys took it off, being funny.
Well, we can just go right down.
We made this agenda, but the budget was on here. To pass the budget, it's to pass the tax levy. Because I'm doing everything the right way while everybody trying to, uh, subvert the process. So everybody sitting here jumping through loops and hoes and not basically crossing their teeth and down their eyes. And that's what you should do. So as you can see, you need to call another meeting to pass the budget.
We're here, we can do it right now. We're here, we can do it right now.
There's no budget on the agenda. This y'all took off. I had it on the agenda right here. Look. Budget.
Okay, that's a second.
It can be a motion, a second, all you want. I just told you. She just.
I'm voting on a second.
There's no budget.
How we going with the previous budget presented to the board?
We are, but there's no budget on here. They took it off the agenda. So you can't even vote on a budget today. Because they're being funny.
Nobody's funny. Robert, why? So, uh, can I ask Robert a question? Why would we even adjust the budget? We know.
Well, we not on the budget right now. We talking about tax levy. So we don't want to get off track. We don't want to get off track. Only if my budget came up is because you have to pass a budget before you pass the tax levy. And that's what I've been asking y'all to do every board that y'all have not attended. So you had seven different opportunities to pass a budget, but you didn't show up. So here we are now, after fifteen hours, trying to pass them, and y'all doing it wrong. So no, I will not be part of, uh, you passing a tax levy the wrong way. Passing the right way, pass the budget. Y'all here all the way from March to pass a budget. March of this year, twenty twenty-four. We're now talking about the next budget cycle. That's how bad this is, guys. This is how much they neglect their dudes. But play the game, kick the kid down the road. No one is taking care of the business up here, the last two trustees. But they come here and grandstand and talk about why, uh, we need a tax levy all of a sudden. You got to the thirty-first to make it right.
Just another point.
It's not a point. Just like you're a point, y'all. You got insurance, right? We don't have insurance because y'all come to board meetings.
This is your politics.
No, insurance, sir. And I think the people see through it right now.
Vote on it right now and it's done. As you say, we can vote on it right now and it's done.
We are, we are going to vote on it. Not right now. We're going to vote on it and have another meeting. So we can't pass this the proper way with the budget, with the budget.
It's a motion, second, call the row.
We not, we're not passing this.
They're calling the row and letting it pass or fail. That's law of transorder that you like to talk about so much. That's law of transorder that you like to talk about so much.
What you, what you asking?
First and the second, call the row. No, no.
I'm definitely not voting on this. Just told you the process. The attorney just told you the legal process, and you still want to do it the wrong way.
But the attorney advised it. It's valid to pass it down.
But she told you the law. The law is to have a budget and then the tax levy. How you passing the tax levy?
Call the row. Call the row. Call the row. You just still want to, you just still want to be on record, voting no against it. That's all. Call the row. It's first and the second. Call the row.
There ain't a first and a second.
You just want to be on record for not being able to know against it. That's all. It's just another trick. It's another point. To have another agenda with things out there and truth be out there. Call the row.
Another meeting.
Call the row.
Whereas we can have all the real.
There's a first and a second. Yeah, it's call the row. There's a first and a second.
We're not, we're not voting.
There's a first and a second. Call the row.
We're going to do it the right way. We can call a special meeting.
There's a first and.
We can pass the budget and also pass the budget if we're going to pass the life.
Clear. There's a first and a second.
Who motion first, sorry?
Well, just to pass it. Trusty Carolina? In a second. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Let me reverse that. I'm halt. I have a motion and Trusty Carolina saying. It was, I, I, I'd agree under section seven.
It can say you just have a special meeting and you pass everything the right way. That's it. Trusty Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trusty Gray Everett? We try to raise the tax levy. It's to the budget. To approve the ordinance, the general fund, the general system fund, tax levy ordinance. That's the question.
No, it's, I, I, I'm one of the people that's in the range of taxes that I, where I can't afford my taxes. They're too high, and I don't see why we should levy them until we know what we need to levy.
Yeah, you mean? Trusty Carolina? Supervisor Henry?
No.
Motion failed. See, they try to raise property tax. Wake up, y'all. Next, on the agenda, on the new business, we see. Is there a motion to consolidate one through seven? consolidate one through seven? Is there a motion for a consensus from one through seven? Is there a second? Alright, there a motion and second in discussion?
Yes. Uh what is? The item three, what is that exactly? It's on the initial side.
Okay, um that's our insurance coverage. Uh what, Robert, Robert can explain it more? Because Robert, when it deals with this come, come up, so he's playing this. And just for the record, so everybody understands what's happening, all these are our insurance coverage for crime insurance, uh cyber insurance, things of that nature. This has nothing to do with property and casualty or vehicle insurance. This is strictly those items. Today is the deadline to pass this. This is why I came here. Other than that, I would not be in this building. Uh once we pass this, then this will be in effect.
Good.
Go ahead, Robert.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? The uh number three, uh approve the IP and G. Which, what line is that?
That's number three.
No, no, I'm saying what, what type of insurance is that?
Um that's, that's why general liability, public official insurance, um pretty much that's for all of our insurance. That's the spending portion.
Okay, so and what does that cover us for?
Um that covers us for.
No, I'm saying the time.
Time period debt is from um December first, twenty twenty three till November thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Nothing after December first, twenty twenty three. Is everything before December first. So whatever. Uh so the way it works, our insurance, um I, um the broker is here for passing, they can be here, but basically our insurance person on the claim basis. So we only, so if it's something that happened in the past and then claimed it, then our insurance company will not cover it. So anything, so if they make a claim for something today and it happened, and let's say something happened before December first, our insurance company will not pick it up. So this is uh by, uh it's called tail coverage. And so, yeah.
So something that wasn't claimed in the past year, but then it's claimed, but it's said today?
Because it, well, I'm sure it works on two things. It works on what time period it happened and what's the date of the claim.
Okay, I understand that. Uh okay. Do you have any updates on the general liability and those?
For one, December first on the floor?
Yes.
Uh my brokers are working very hard and trying to um, I, I have no, no real thing. Working on.
Is there any paperwork uh that's stating that why they have not, somebody hasn't picked up? You know, maybe like say if I'm trying to get some coverage and they deny me, I think they're gonna come back to me and say, hey, you did it because you've got four tickets and eight speeding tickets or whatever, you know? So I.
Yeah, just the general, they says um just some. I, I, uh I don't want to speak too much because uh they told me a lot of it had to be talked about in executive session. Well, I would say one thing is a lot of the media press and TV on YouTube, I would um, I, I think we should have a conversation with the broker about that. And she's open to talk to you one-on-one or two-to-four, come here anytime. But, but some of those part don't feel comfortable with the broker.
What's turnaround generally on something like that? So say, once say we can talk to the broker, they find something or whatever, what's, how long it's.
Oh man, and they're, I, I want to say our brokers, they're, they're working so hard. We have, we just don't have, we had that one offer.
No, no, I'm saying if what, if we, once we, something is found, uh how fast?
Oh, yeah, that was um, right now it's, it's an emergency. So once we find something, we will have to do an emergency meeting, bring it to the board, and you have to approve it. So as soon as we find something, twenty-four hours, we can even say meeting that same day. As soon as we, we find something, you might get a call, hey, can you come in?
Just show up?
Show, you gotta show up to the meeting. If you're twenty-four, I'd be the only thing on the agenda that is considered emergency. We can have emergency meetings within twenty-four hours, turn elsewhere and speak on that more. But let's say we find something that new, I think we can have a meeting and within that hour, you guys.
Okay, thank you, Robert. And, and just to clarify, I do completely agree. This is an emergency. And should, should you guys find insurance that will cover the township that the board is agreeable to, I do think that an emergency meeting should be called and that the board should go.
Like I always have told us, they should have an emergency meeting. They should have a special meeting when we did have coverage. Put it on the agenda, put it on the agenda, but get to them, y'all, alright? I hear you. Um alright, so it's a motion and a second on the floor, case by Rock, to approve items one through seven. Trustee Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Trustee Carlisle?
Yeah.
Trustee Gray Everett? Then yes, and supervisor Hinder? Oh, we did not. So sorry. We need a motion to approve one through seven. So this is for the motion to approve one through seven. That was the dissent, especially just like she don't call her mom. Second and second. Second. Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Carlisle?
Yeah.
Gray Everett? Supervisor Hinder? Yes, motion passed. Alright. Uh next on the agenda, of course, is public coming. Um I'm gonna say a couple of things and then we gonna call people from this list. Um you can come up and speak. You have three minutes to address this body and you can talk about whatever um we just discussed, see? First, I just want to talk about a couple of things was removed from the agenda, which was for two things. Uh December seventeenth. One thing I put on agenda was to adopt the budget. The appropriation budget for the one township for general system. Another thing I placed on the agenda was to adopt the budget for the general fund. Those two items was removed from this agenda. The great thing that I was trying to push for all residents of the one township was approval of supervisors one hundred percent property tax refund from all homeowners throughout the township. A lot of you guys may complain about your property taxes are super high. So I felt the need to make sure I gave you uh some kind of relief for this holiday season. So that's what, that was on the agenda. Also, approval of licenses for all four township employees. That was on the agenda. And last but not least, we had on agenda to approve and accept the resignation of Jerry Jones. He's a trustee that quit um a while ago, and that's why they kept playing this game and trying to hold down the clock and wear our sixty days, but we have never ever accepted the resignation of Jerry Jones. It has to come before this board for approval, for us to accept it, for the clock to start. The clock cannot even start until you accept it. So that's the other issue uh before you. Also, y'all just saw us display uh pay bills here for a township. It says in my heart that we did not agree to pay bills for everybody that was a vendor, everybody that didn't work for us. It's, it really hurt and I'm hurting for them, which I don't get the cause later because now they cannot have a great Christmas because they spend their money first to give us products. And then we supposed to reimburse them. So when we don't reimburse them, we hurt them, little do people know. And it's really hurting everybody through a township that looked forward to that food box like we did with Thanksgiving. We gave greens, beans, potatoes, noodles in the box, seasonings all in the box, everything you needed. You didn't even have to go to the grocery store. That's how great that box was. So that you would not be getting for this Christmas due to the fact that the two trustees on the end, Chris and Carmen, y'all chose not to vote to pay for boxes for you to get food or food for the food pantry. Uh also the toys. Y'all know looking for toys every single year. You know, when Francis Corretti was here, every year, they get a toy giveaway. So why would we not continue that same thing here for a township? We did it last year. It was epic. We had it where it was like Toys R Us. You just walk in and you pick out what toys you wanted. Each kid got three to four toys. It was really dope. Y'all, people was looking forward to that. Y'all signed up. They really hurt about it. Y'all been getting calls all day as it relates to, hey, are you giving toys out tomorrow? I'll be giving out the Christmas boxes tomorrow. Everybody's looking forward to that. So they heard that they're not gonna be getting those items tomorrow. Uh last but not least, we're gonna schedule a special meeting uh so that we can pass our budget and our tax levy before this year is out. And of course, we want to do it the right way. We are supposed to always pass a budget. But we went the entire year without passing the budget because people played poly tricks the entire year. So this is why we're here at this uh juncture as it relates to passing a budget and then passing the tax levy. Do not ever let nobody come and try to uh fool you into believing we should pass the tax levy and they increasing your property taxes. You don't even know what they increased before. They didn't give you no budget. They didn't give you no kind of outlook of what the plan is for a year, how we gonna spend the money, what we gonna do with the taxes, nothing. But yeah, just push it, push it, push it. That's all they were trying to do. But pay attention, guys, because stop letting people uh trick you because of all the chaos and you're not reading or paying attention. Educate yourself first before you just go off the uh habits. Uh next, appointments. Let me be clear about appointments, how they kept putting out this disinformation. Appointment works just like this. All you guys saw, we get appointed, you saw Carmen get appointed. The appointment is not solely a person, a one individual up here on this board. It is for everybody. Everybody on this board gets to pick and choose who they want. They either gonna get a motion or get a second, or they don't get no motion, or don't get no second, or don't get no votes. That's how this game go. As you know, a lot of people got their name thrown on the table. They couldn't get a second, let alone get the votes to become supervisor or to become the trustee. So that's how that game goes. It's not uh was trying to prevent supervisor opinion from appointing. I can only suggest someone, just like everybody up here can suggest someone. But you gotta have a second and you gotta have votes to make that person a trustee. Just so you got the truth of how you appoint somebody uh way up there. So what they're telling you is so misleading and it's all false. It's all negative. Uh I am seeking the removal of trustee uh Carmen Carlisle, because she's a liar. And I'm also seeking the removal.
You're the only person up here lying is you. You been broke, that's why I'm tolerating you.
You are, you are.
You are just, that's why I'm not gonna vote. My name is Karen Caroline. You need to learn how to say the holy word, Nate. My name is Everett, not Everett.
But I just want you to know, I'm trying to say my name. Both of them, and I'm gonna be in court to remove them for neglecting their duty as trustee. They have my character here.
You broke, Robert.
Thank you, I appreciate it. They have my character to be for standing over sixty-seven day warning uh three months now, and y'all should not want anybody to govern your community. We are not. I'm going to tell you, what you say, disagree, you either voted up or you voted off. You can't choose. Last but not least, I want you to know. People tell y'all stuff and they tell you something, and I think that it is a problem. But yet, when we had meetings in the township, we had them downstairs. People tell us to move upstairs and our actual board meeting, and we did it downstairs. Then we had downstairs, they didn't show up. Then they want to go to a conference, but the people, everybody keep claiming they scared. And another thing that y'all missed, we had a electoral board on Tuesday, December seventh, where we had the schedule board meeting. They did not show up to the board meeting. But yeah, trustee Gonzalez sat on the floor and did not even show up to the actual board meeting to vote for things. And that's why we see this special meeting before you today. So putting all these things out, so hopefully those that paid attention, heard what I said, didn't get yelled, say whatever they want, ain't no bother. All I want you to know is the facts, the truth, and another side. Not listen to the lies and the manipulation and the board cannot move anything but keep doing other people's dirty, dirty work. Uh Carmen Carlisle and uh Chris Gonzalez, you are all for. And then you pack it out in your shoes. Those are the puppet masters behind all this, this core at the township. The township doing great. We have surplus. And I've said this, I've shown this. Y'all have seen our audit report. Everything shows the surplus at Fort Tenth. I get that y'all know everything to look bad or be bad, but it is not bad. When I came over there, I turned it around. Y'all had a four-point-six million dollar deficit when I came over there. And now you have nothing but surpluses in every single account in Fort Township under my leadership, despite the credit that you might want to give me. So I think I'm doing an awesome job and just showing that my own people, my own race, uh tax people, my own people to help. That's for real, so we're running out of the people. No, if we're gonna move on, we have a star child. And if we can move your, the draft, we have a lot of meetings that we have to bring up too. So we gonna go and give you three minutes. Go ahead, go ahead. Alright, we're gonna start uh with the Congress meeting in the hour. Three minutes, please. Oh, and then I want to say this because we start, it's a lot of people that come up here and they say that they do not live in Fort Township. So please, do y'all research. Don't allow people to talk negative about our community and they don't live in Fort Township, let alone the village of Nausicaä. Where people are now losing information, walking information, and they not on the front of Fort Township town, you know, TV.
Alright, so I just wanted to uh say thank you, trustees, for holding out for saving our last ditch effort to steal. Uh we understand what's going on, even if our supporters are not with it. We understand what you guys are doing and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Uh when it comes to um this election, I'm so glad that she's not even on the ballot. So we don't even have to worry about dealing with her past, the inauguration. So um you know, it's, it's something weird when she just sits up here and spews whatever she wants to spew and think that she can just talk average and rape you guys. But then nobody can say anything against her. That's the problem with a dictatorship. She said that she hate dictators, but that's what she showed up here today, is that she's a major dictator. Um y'all gotta make sure that since she's not on the ballot, that y'all don't vote this other dictator in because believe it or not, she has passed with Christopher Clark. And believe it or not, Christopher Clark is running for supervisor with the full slate as well. So you guys gotta understand that we have to make sure that we vote corruption completely out of the township. The insurance for her being uninsured, that's ridiculous. You want to sit up here and lie and say that it's their fault that we don't have insurance? No, it's your fault that we don't have insurance. And also, when it comes to the toys, I am sure that anyone that don't have toys, you all have a town that gives out free food as well as free toys. So don't just always have to rely on the township because that is what we call a public aid office anyway. However, you can call two-one-one, you can go to churches, there's other places that you can vote for when you're in need. It does not need to be the township all the time. Unfortunately, the township is at war. So until they get a new supervisor in place that's actually qualified, then we can't worry about trying to pass a budget when all she's trying to do is do a last ditch effort to steal. Then you guys can listen.
My name's Denise Clark. And I, I just moved in this township. And I haven't been here for seven months. And for the seven months that I've been here, it's just been war. Just war. I moved from a city. I moved from a city thinking that I was gonna find a better place. Look again. I paint because I want to be a part of a township that's going somewhere. We're gonna have to, we, and, 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 and I know everybody has to stay home, whatever. I, I just believe that some of the things from Dalton is feeling over now into the township. And, 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 and another thing is I'm thinking about those seniors that has to go to dialysis. And they get their check at the beginning of the month. So they didn't plan for the inner month. How do they get to their appointments? You know, we can't just throw things up like this at the last minute. Toys, fine, she gave us other options. But when you talk about seniors in there, life and people that are gonna be hungry, we have to think about things like that. And yes, we just throw things out. But I just say may the best man win. But we gotta come in with resolution. We cannot just keep fighting. Let's come with some type of resolution and let's think about our seniors. That's, that's, that's where my heart is. Let's think about our seniors and during the Christmas season, let's have a Merry Christmas.
Alicia, is it going?
Hi, uh good afternoon. I'm just saying good evening, but good afternoon. Um wanna start, and I hope everyone can hear me, by stating that Tiffany did the exact same thing. Um wanna start, and I hope everyone can hear me, by stating that Tiffany did the exact same thing when it came to the budget meeting, which is way more important than this meeting. She had that meeting one Friday at one o'clock in the afternoon. She was hoping that no one would show up for that meeting, so that backfired. But for her to sit here and talk about what they're doing, and she did the exact same thing, is the face of contradiction hypocrisy and just a liar. Okay? You love to call Carmen Carmen out of her name. Carmen is standing up with integrity, with professionalism, you know, she's big enough. She's standing in the fire, because you guys met, it's a hostile work environment. Every time she said, you better to come to a meeting, who wants to show up to this environment Tiffany? You bring chaos. Somebody said, you know, if you love the people so much, why don't you step aside, step down? Look at us even when we're talking to you, if you love people and there ain't nothing we can do about it. Why don't you look at us, acknowledge us? I'm just saying, because it doesn't matter, I'm gonna still say what I'm gonna say. Um for the lady that just spoke, just to let you know, there is a program through the state, if they are on Medicare or Medicaid, they can call and they can arrange rides to any metaphor appointment. So this this not, actually this is protected, because why would we wanna put our seniors on uninsured vehicles? So just to let you guys know, you can research it, there is uh rides available for people. You don't even have to be a senior, if you're on Medicaid or Medicare, you can get rides to any metaphor appointment. So just wanna make that uh clear. Tiffany, um you know, you talk about, you know, insurance, insurance. You had an event yesterday at the Melanie Fitness Center. Was that place insured? Okay, I just need to know, was it insured? How did the residents get there? Did you bust the man on uninsured vehicles? Because they were sure riding around town yesterday. There were several sightings of Thorntown Township vehicles on the streets. Okay, whether they have insurance or not, they were on the streets. Um you know, and also, you know what Tiffany, and I hate to do this, I hate to call you out for your name, but you are a liar. It's been proven over and over and over and over again. You talk about things that you turn around and do, and you you basically justify it when you're doing them. Also, let me, before I run out of time, why are you trying to take our vote away Tiffany? The same thing that you're advocating for, because of the caucus and the reason why you're not on the ballot? You're 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 that same way that you feel like those voters are stripped of their rights? You're doing the exact same thing, not allowing the people to vote for the next trustee. That should be our decision. We have waited sixty days. We have waited sixty days and now now it's time for us to vote, but you're taking that.
What's your zip code?
You're taking away our vote, we deserve to be able to vote.
You don't even get it, it's time to vote. Your time is up. Your time is up here. You're not, you're not a resident. Your time is up. What's your area?
Security. Whatever township, you don't have to prove anything to them.
Security.
You don't have to prove anything to them, okay? You're you're not, you're not my dictator Tiffany.
You can come over here and remove her, she can remove her. You don't have any more time. Your time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up. Damn, your time is up. Don't call me. Stop talking to me. Security, are you gonna move up? I'm gonna finish up. I'm gonna finish up.
I respect you.
We just have everyone in the building. And I'd like to point out something that's very vile to our builders. Um at the last caucus, there was a one of our Tiffany Henry's associates standing outside calling people's names out as they approached to get into line, long line we had out there. That included, you know, I saw a couple of the buses out there that she had a people in there. Uninsured buses more than likely, but anyway, they could have easily gotten in line just like the rest of us. But the narrative that was put out there on television was that they were locked out. I got there at five oh five and there were plenty of seniors like myself, I am also a senior. So when I hear somebody, I take care to see if you got there. Yeah, yeah, I've been taking care of myself for a long time. As have a lot of other seniors out here, the ones that are paying for some of some of these uh situations that that she's gotten to see. I'd also like to point out the fact that at December third meeting in Dalton, uh she got up and talked about respect. This woman would not understand respect if a Rachel Franklin came back from the grave. Yeah. And she had no concept, no concept of respect. As far as Rachel is concerned, well, you know, they they have nothing else to do, they know they go on with her. They wanna be with her. So we can just claim our whole township of this deprivation, of these of these people that try to intimidate. We have people in here that that ridicule that ridicule cancer patients, but that goes right along with somebody that has a cancer scan. I mean, these people gravitate to each other. So it's gonna be a few more months, but we're gonna get our village and our township back, uh whether they like it or not, you're voting. I'd also like to point out that uh the vehicles that they have operating, if you see Thorntown Township vehicles transporting people without insurance, that is definitely a breach of the law. If you're giving events at a building in Dalton, okay, should not, should that may not be fees and insurance for that building? I mean, but this operating is just going out of, it's just disarray. And it's been proven over and over again, these these budget uh situations that she's claiming to have are just the opposite. We have, we get deficits left and right. Uh when Lori Nigel comes in with her report next month, this should really, really be investigated. Because some of the stuff that they're claiming will once again be shot to hell. They have no concept of what's going on here.
Alright, your time is up.
Your time is up too.
Time's up, thank you. At least try to make the ballot. Thank you, thanks. She's not gonna make it. She's not gonna make it. None of y'all.
Alright, go ahead, you have a report.
That's more money.
That's not, I don't have to, but y'all be tired.
Excuse me, I have. I wanna educate Tiffany Henry. She always say she wanna educate the residents, so they'll want to residents educate her. The buses that you had yesterday at Melanie Fitness Center quote unquote police station having bingo, first of all, you should have had amusement license from the village with consent of the board in order to hold that event. Also, trustees, I wanna ask, because there also was a bus there transporting residents. If you didn't have any insurance, were those buses insured yesterday evening at six o'clock? Well, that's unheard of, because that liability will fall on Dalton. And we have our own issues with uh Tiffany Henry, okay? And at the carcass, you had six buses out there transporting residents. That was illegal. Let me educate you. You you cannot transport residents on a bus to a carcass to an event such as that. That's illegal. Let her know what time you just sitting over there, let her know that that's illegal. Please do, because she need to be educated that that's illegal to do. I also, I wanna know approximately why she's sitting up here telling the residents that the trustees up here will not vote on giving you a tax rebate. If you think about it, the last one you received was probably, and you might have received less, my taxes are extremely high here in Thorntown Township, I received thirty five dollars. So if you got, what is it, two million dollars that you wanna disperse upon seventeen municipalities, think about it. Think about residents, how much would you receive? That she's sweating them to vote on it, to make it look like she's doing something for the residents and you're only gonna receive fifteen dollars. If you need fifteen dollars, call me, I have it for you. You know, I'm not even entertaining you two clowns on there. Uh excuse me, it's three clowns. I'm not entertaining you. So your time is up, so your time is up. Senior, your time is up. Your time is up. Christmas. Your time is up. Plan to furnish your family. Your time is up. Some food. What's your area? I am a security.
Alright, who's saying, we got stuff to do, we can't play trial. We got stuff to do. Tiffany, we need to say it with you. It's free minutes. After Tamika is Eduardo. The Val Val West, can you be mine please?
Um I know y'all talking about, a lot of people that's here are talking about the different services, right? Thorntown Township has been around for a long time. A lot of people have been receiving services for Thorntown Township. As the senior services actually, we service a lot of seniors throughout Thorntown Township. It's very important for our senior service program to continue. We got vendors who have not been paid. We do not have access to our desktops, current computer desktops right now, where we cannot provide all the services needed to serve the people of Thorntown Township. I am asking and requesting the board today to please reconsider passing the budget, approving the bills. We want our lunch program to continue and we'd like all our other vendors to get paid. I am asking you, please, a lot of seniors will be affected. It's the holiday season, a lot of them do not have family members to provide for them. I'm up here, I'm shaking right now, because I cannot believe everything that has been going on today. I am begging you on behalf of the senior services department to please reconsider. Please.
There were like seven bills that wouldn't affect any services that were taken off. So if supervisor Pena wanted to support the motion, she could have, and all the bills could have been paid minus like seven bills. So I'm still willing to do that if she is, but other than that, if it don't, doesn't get paid, then you know.
That's not true, she needs to pay all of the vendors. There's vendors on there that have in your department, and they need to pay everybody. Or sit here and trying to put on the show and say, well, why can't I pay anybody? It's just, everybody need to give everybody a money, give the work, pay them. But uh. So I'm just, I'm just representing senior services department right now. A lot of the people that we, that affected by my department, I do support a lot of other departments, but on behalf of senior services, because I'm the manager there, it's the other department here, so they can come represent their department. Uh we do service a lot of seniors that they go to other departments for services. However, on the agenda, it is um number two forty six and two sixty six. That's actually our holiday event that's on the agenda that was taken off.
I didn't announce it out loud. He started, it says potential in voids. I did not take those off. I took off the things that were uh against or not in compliance with the energy order. That is the only thing that were taken off, nothing for senior services, the youth department, any other services were taken off. So again, my main devotion was to take off about a couple of things that aren't in compliance with the norms that Thorntown Creek.
So I put this regardless.
Yeah, I mean, because sometimes I ask questions and they're answering, so I got the answers to those. So again, it wasn't taken off, so.
Alright, and it was taken off, but we give you the minutes after this, because we do got another meeting to go to. So y'all can.
No, they weren't taken off. For the record, any trustee grab once they voted no about us.
We did vote no.
That's the bottom line. That's what I'm saying, really, the minute.
Pay all the vendors, pay all the vendors, not politics with certain vendors. Pay everybody, so stop playing. Alright, come on, we got somewhere to go guys, we got one more, because then I gotta leave. Don't want you to think I'm not trying to hear you speak, so come on up here. I got another meeting that's supposed to begin at two o'clock. Remember, I only came here because I wanted to pay for the shoes.
Where's the list? Something I'm talking about.
Hey, five is next.
My name is Kate Fox.
Kate Fox.
And I say two, that's after him, after him.
I told him to go up there. I am. Alright, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh my name is Mark Laskeys. I'm from the outreach department. Uh back there are my fellow coworkers and I feel like we haven't been very clear to the residents, because to me, what matters more than anything is making sure that you residents know what's going on in your township, which is the primary function for outreach. What we did was holding on on every single one of your doors, every seventeen municipalities we went and on your door to inform you guys about resources that you guys have access to. And I wanna make this very clear, there for everybody and anyone who's watching this on livestream or here in person. For us in our outreach team, it does not matter who are the trustees, it doesn't matter who the supervisor is, whoever's in that position. Our main goal is just to inform our residents about what is happening in our township, whether they be events or resources that some people really do need. I've had people come up to me and cry because they didn't have food in their home and I was able to provide them food boxes. For me, that's all I ever care for and that's all I ever need. So very, the matter more than anything is that our township, our people, our residents get what they deserve. And our team here, my team, that's all we care for, that's all we push for, that's all we work for. Because at the end of the day, none of this is possible without any of you. You are our boss. You are the ones in control, you are the one who tells us what we can and cannot do. That goes for everyone. You are in control. Don't think that you're not, don't feel like you're not, because at the end of the day, I answer and our group outreach is loyal to one group and one group only, the residents, because they're the ones that matter. They're the ones who are consistent, they're the ones who are always gonna be here. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
First of all, my name is Tiffany Henry, I'm the director of general systems and the food management. We have been affected by all this conversation today. We buy food, we can't give it away because we don't have our bills paid. I sat there just now and my vendors are calling me on my cell phone. They stopped our food from being delivered. So guess what, ladies and gentlemen, we won't have food boxes to give out and these five young people can't go out and deliver them. We had to rent trucks. I follow rules. If you tell me we have no insurance, I won't drive. So therefore, I rented trucks for the company, for these men and women to deliver boxes to our seniors, to our senior buildings. I'm not asking for much, just pay our bills. I understand image, but GA has a separate line item. Please verify that, that you can hold us accountable for that, because I remember, I've been at Thorntown Township since nineteen ninety seven. I can tell you how Chrissy's bags used to be. I can tell you how she went from bags to boxes. And now with the boxes with closure on them. And guess what? We did start out with everybody's name, but we also had sponsors' name on their name. And as years progressed, we have only had the supervisor name on the box. Please, we can't get any more vendors. Vendors, I'm begging them on hands and knees, literally, to help us, to give us our product. And all I'm asking is for the board to reconsider as well, to vote. I understand image, but please verify that you can do that. We also, just for image purpose, the letterhead, the township supervisor has a separate letterhead just for GA and always had had one. So please, I'm asking the board to work together to approve all the bills. I understand what you got an issue with, but please remember, it is the holiday season. And I feel bad, because if you go right now to the vet building, you're gonna see a lot of stuff that I got, I can't give away. They're holding my meat hostage and I'm okay with that. They're holding my meat hostage, and I'm okay with that, too. Because guess what? They haven't gotten paid. And guess what? We can't pay the vendors, they can't pay their staff. So what's gonna happen to their staffs? So all of that, is that all of you all consider paying the bills. We gonna have internet service in some of the buildings. Security, you want security? They want to give us extra security, because bills are my best only. Please, ladies and gentlemen, the men and women out in the audience, it, it's enough pressure on the, on them as well as the supervisor. But think about the pressure of not knowing on the staff. I just ask for all the bills to be considered. And I understand, image, I hear you loud and clear, but for GA, it's a different policy and procedure for that. So please consider that, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so very much, and happy holidays to you. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
My name is Kay Fox. I've been out here, I've been living in this township since my son was sixteen. He's fifty-one now. I never, in my, my dreams, seen the chaos, the backstabbing, the jealousy, the envy, the, I consider it, don't even consider the kids and the senior citizens because of your agenda. Everybody ain't gonna, everybody ain't gonna get along with everybody. Okay, but it got to be some type of reasonable solution that's bringing in all the outside people into our township.
That's right.
They rip the outside people out, it's running our township.
That's right.
Y'all so busy trying to stay up Tiffany, that you got other sexist listeners slipping in in here. Like Tiffany said, she's a waste here. You got people flying in here, busting in here, despite all kind of chaos. And another thing, if you're not a Thornton Township resident, you need to stay off of these nights, because you don't have no concern about what's going on in our township. I don't care if your daughter got a partner here, I don't care if your grandkids got a partner here. If you're not a resident here, you should just tell that, and let the residents, the only ones in the township. While y'all back there hollering, while y'all back there hollering. Let me tell you something, I'ma leave it like this. Love you, Merry Christmas. And number two, uh, Mr. Uh, damn me, why you sitting there giving, slipping me off with the bird? Like I told you, your mama should be probably settled now. You be cut like a spider, but you don't spit me, spit your mama. And everybody have a Merry Christmas, they're like, I'm here to hear. Like you better watch, sign your mama to the moon.
Yes, please.
Uh, if anyone's in need of food, areas in Chicago, food, hospital, and people are list, of close facilities where you live at, so that you can call the number, number seven, seven, three, two, four, seven, three, six, six, three. I repeat, the number is seven, seven, three, two, four, seven, three, six, six, three. And also, as you know, they also give out Christmas stuff to people, too. So there are other areas for you to look into that will have gifts and presents, even Park District has something. So don't be, don't be think that you lost. They always want to make you feel like you are living in the ghetto. We do not live in the ghetto. And the mouth, the amount of money they say that the dog people, uh, get for income is not correct. I do not make twenty-three thousand dollars for you. Even if I was on public aid, it'd probably be just as much. So don't be fooled by this envious, crazy-ass shit that's going on. I get tired of hearing this every day. Every day, I see something on the news about dog, and about you. You have no respect. This young lady right here should be called by her name. They got all sort of things for you. You got more, they got more things for you than they do for her. And you should be ashamed of yourself. And I've talked to you once, I told you, you think you can say whatever you want to say, and you think you'll get away with it. You do not have that conversation. And you still acting like a little girl. And I don't understand. You talk about seniors loving you. I had a lot of respect for you. I was looking forward for good things from you. In the long run, you have made me feel like an unhappy parent. You should be ashamed of yourself. And another thing, you don't have to put your name on the box, you can put Chicago Depository on there. And the taxes already passed, within four point nine nine. You need to remember what you're talking about. You need to go back and look at the videos like I do. I see you all the time. I listen to Call of. I went back as far as twenty sixteen. And you need to go look at yourself after you leave here. Have a good day.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Uh, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody in the board for coming out today. Uh, I'd like to thank the residents and the people who aren't residents for coming out today. I just wanna make something very clear. Uh, what I've noticed from this township is something that is amazing. It's something I've never seen before in my entire life, in all the cities and villages and municipalities that I've visited. I've never seen something quite like this before. You have a gift, a rare jewel. You have a supervisor who acts. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm not, I'm not telling you from what I heard, I'm telling you from what I've seen. You know, I've been living here to see. I was there at Thanksgiving, just give me a second. If you were there at Thanksgiving, the room fucking was, you could talk, but you weren't there. There was a line miles down of people who actually wanted the services that they already paid for. All of these food boxes is not a handout. That's what you're misunderstanding, is not a handout. You've already paid for the services. You're only receiving the services that you already paid for. It's like if you went to a grocery store, and you got all the food in the grocery store, and then you go to the line to pay for it, but you don't have to put out a check because you already paid for it. Because you already paid for the services, you deserve it.
That's right.
It's not a handout, you deserve the services. If you then don't receive the services, if you don't want the services, you don't have to take it, but it doesn't mean you don't deserve it. You deserve it. It's your money at work for you. At the end of the day, no matter how you feel about the supervisor, whether you like her or don't like her, it's okay, because what you're hurting by not allowing people to receive their services that they paid for with their tax dollars, which is thousands of people, cuz I've seen them. I'm not telling you from what I heard, I'm telling you from what, from what I've seen. I've seen thousands of people show up and begging and glad to receive the services that township offers. The people who come to these meetings do not actually reflect what the township actually is. The township is made up of thousands of people, and those thousands of people want the toys from the township.
Yeah, they do.
The reason why is because the toys that are given from the township are actually better toys. The food that's given from the township is actually better food. Because those ones are better, they're actually receiving more for your money, and because they're receiving more for your money.
Please stop, that has not a floor.
I'm just trying to have you see. No matter the nature of it, I just want you to see, this is a rare jewel. It's a rare time where you can actually receive what you're actually deserving for. So I really want you all to really reconsider.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone in the township. Thank you.
And just for the record, guys, we service over a hundred and ninety thousand revenue. So if you see those people in here talking mad, that is not our people that really support Thornton Township. I have truly loved throughout the seven, six seasons.
Good afternoon. I am a resident of the village of Dalton for twenty-five years. I am a resident of Thornton Township for twenty-five years. As a resident, I am very proud of Chris Gonzalez and Carmen Carla for taking a stand to defend what is right on the long term for us as Thornton Township residents. I'm very proud of you. My second point is that a replacement trustee is voted in for Thornton Township. We need input as residents. It should not be something where the supervisor decides that will be. That should be the decision of the residents of Thornton Township. And my third point is, Ms. Tiffany Penney, I have known you for ten years. I met you when Riley Rogers was choosing a trustee for the village of Dalton. At that point, I wish he would have chosen me to be a trustee. Imagine how different it would have been if he would have chosen a real leader like myself. Imagine that. But he made a mistake, and I do forgive him. Well, Ms. Penney, I am a mature person. I watched you for ten years, my young lady. I am asking that you would resign as supervisor of Thornton Township. I've known you for ten years, and that you would resign as the mayor of the village of Dalton. This would be for the benefit of all of us. This is my day to speak, and I have spoken. Please resign from both positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl Hill.
They been just talking to me, now I'm just talking to me.
Cheryl Hill.
Cheryl Hill standing at the top, I'm sorry. Greens in the day, but the father and the son, uh, oh my God, I just got real, this is a pop-up. I'm gonna start with, uh, good seeing holiday to everybody. I have seen more than my eyes could. Good thing I don't stir up my ass. When it come to, uh, civilship, civility, stewardship, servant to, to the people, that is your job. No, let me correct that. Your job, the way you go after, get your paycheck.
That's right.
The way you pay some of your taxes. Because this here, this is service to us. This is not serve yourself. This is not cut me out of button last year. See, my thing about appointment shift, y'all played a little game. Y'all played a nasty little game. You messed around with a hundred and ninety thousand people, and we're sitting here today looking at the triple down checks in every shape, in every form. It has affected everyone, everything, everybody, and every part of every one of these girls that's out here. I'm not gonna call on one person, because this ain't been about not one of y'all. I don't care how long you been set there, I don't care how many you setting dogs. It ain't never, ever been about you all, cuz any of y'all gonna take us in? Cuz the ten people that I had to take over to the township last week, I don't have no cut. But I made sure the property they was in was insured. I don't care how y'all get it done, y'all need to get that building back open. Cuz not one of us signed off on any of this, you didn't put in our vote. Some of us didn't get our vote. And I'm so mild content with so much going on. There was once about a time, didn't nobody know me. What about? What about? Once upon a time, didn't nobody know nobody, and it's wrong. But when it come to run elections, I have seen some of you elected official. I've seen you all sit up there contesting something, you ain't got no goddamn business contesting. I have seen people treat people in a manner that you wouldn't wanna be treated in. And you certainly don't wanna be coming to your house treating you like that. And then you stand here at this public forum and make your whole goddamn family wish they probably didn't know you. You don't know how to apologize, you want somebody to bow down. Y'all don't validate nothing for nobody else's life. Nobody can tell nobody who to love, who to stand with, who to speak up for, who to pay care of, who to love y'all for. Y'all need to stop thinking that y'all somebody's judge, jury, and executioner out here. You entitled to your voice, you entitled to your opinion, but you are not entitled to go around obeying no other human being, making like that if they don't exist. And if somebody else has an opinion, you wanna dog them. You got this beautiful woman into something that is none of her making, all these people that come out here to do whatever their job is. They have a right to.
Your time is up.
You know what?
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. You know what this is, this. God, I don't stand at the.
Hold on, we ain't gonna forget what changed in Brown County. Let's be clear about what's going on. That's interrupting the meeting. I remember my honey wasn't always doing that shit to us. But you were about to say right next. I remember that.
That's the end of the list, I believe.
Yes, the, the Carmen Cameron list, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Why is it a list?
There's a list, there's a list because there was board.
I would like the list, thanks.
It was a board, you made file the list, you made file the list, this board is, has.
Cuz we all here for that potential. She put her in, she put her in, and now everything is bad. What you hear? You better write a letter to John, cuz I'll tell the truth on y'all name. I'll tell the truth on. Because you what you in here, right?
It's not on the list. It's not on the list. It's not on the list. You can go, it's not on the list. Second to a jerk.
Second to a jar. Because everybody will talk to nobody on this. That's right, you want your ass on there, because she was your concession. So the people would have their vote, and she was your concession. Get all they ass out. Get all they ass out of here. Everybody want us. So damn what, they been interrupting the meeting the whole damn time. They been having us to meet the whole damn time, and no one said shit. Don't say shit yet. What a shit ass.
Motion to adjourn, reading the Zalas. The Zalas, the Zalas, motion to adjourn. All right. The Zalas, Gray and Red, trustee here. I'm in his, uh, supervisor meetings.
She mad, idiotish. There's something else out here, man.
Y'all dangerous out here.
There's something else. Hold on, can you sense what I said? Cuz he stuck his finger in there, told his mama, said on top of that finger, that's the dog. Sense of that one.
Alright, people. Alright, people, it's live, uncut, unedited. I'm just, I'm just here, people. Y'all heard it for yourself. Heard it for yourself, I'm here. I'm on my way out of here. This is the show, definitely the show, so y'all pray for Thornton Township. Alright, y'all already know what it is, live, uncut, unedited. And I'm out of here. Peace out.